The school board work session begins in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in two minutes. The school board work session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the March 30th, 2022 administrative briefing work session of the Marion County School Board to order at nine o'clock a.m. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. I'll now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this work session.
This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, this Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the school board clerk. After the Board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. We're now beginning our administrative work session with our Neola policy review. We've been working on this for a while, and hopefully today we'll get some more conclusion with this, some finality with our policy review. Mr. Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir. As you can see from the yellow, I'm sorry, in your case, it's a blue notebook that is on the front indicates March 30th, 2022 work session. Neola pulled for review material, and also it's been published on Board Docs. There are six policies listed there, beginning with policy 1113, conflicting employment or contractual relationship, ending with policy 9160, public attendance at school events. There are two policies which have been pulled separately to be dealt with and addressed separately. One is a drug-free workplace policy, which requires some collective bargaining input and cleaning from Neola. The other is as to 8800, religious patriotic ceremonies and observances. And if the Board will recall, I discussed at our last meeting, because that's a fairly long and large policy that's proposed there, I did find that that is a model policy, which statutorily is required to be adopted. However, there are amendments which we can make to said policies or additions, and so I'm pulling that aside to continue to make additions within that context. However, as to the policies that we'll be going through today, beginning with 1113, we also have 5610.5, participation in extracurricular activities, 6610, school internal funds, and 9160, public attendance at school events. So we'll start with Mr. Whitmer, see if there's any input that you have on any of these.
Just to clarify, policy 8800 is not the model policy. The model policy is 8805, and I guess we've done that already. So this is the local policy.
Right. Okay. And I'll have that submitted to the Board for our first set of updates. All right. That being the case, any other input from Neola before we begin?
I don't think so.
All right. Starting with policy 1113, conflicting employment or contractual relationship, and each of these policies were pulled for further review, and now you can see, you've seen these before, and we'll see if there's any edits that you wish to make or simply approve as to each of these items. And we can start with that particular policy, or if any of you have seen any policy which you wish to, which you wish to pull out separately and discuss further, we may do so.
Chair, if I may. My only question, and I don't remember why we pulled this one, my only question on 1113, which is the first policy here, is if an employee is the spouse of a business owner. I don't see that anywhere in here, obviously. Let's say said employee is not listed anywhere on the business documents as an officer of the LLC or whatever, but this talks all about the employee not having employment there or in a contractual relationship, and I wonder if marriage would be classified as a contractual relationship. That's my only question on this one. I'm not sure why else we pulled this.
And I can answer that.
Thank you.
This is, if you look in green there, the writing, see Chapter 112.313 Florida statutes for exemptions to the policy. This is a Neola updated policy specifically to include that language, because everyone can think of exemptions as you're indicating there.
Sure.
And so there is a statute on point which lists out some specific exemptions as well.
Okay.
So there isn't much content to be rearranged unless there is some item which you wish to specifically address, other than the fact that this is a Neola updated policy and has specific reference to the Florida statutes regarding those exemptions.
Okay.
So otherwise, this policy could stand as forward now. Hang on one moment. And the only other thing Terry was pointing out, we discussed this before, was in the second paragraph, there is a his/her duties. Is that the, I know that in another policy, we altered that to not say his/her. We said the performance of the employee's duties, or however you want to do that, or we can leave it as his/her. Legally, there's no particular effect. I was just talking for consistency.
Could you do a broad brush on the Board Member Campbell's question, you know, like immediate family?
That would not seem to be a contractual relationship that is.
Brother, sister, immediate family?
Right. Now, this is about as carefully spelled out as I can, as I think the policy can, indicates that there, we cannot have, no Board member or employee shall have or hold any employment or contractual relationship with any business entity or agency which is doing business with the district, except for those organizations that enter into a collective bargaining agreement or contract with the district. So it's, I mean, that's, this is pretty much consistent with a prior policies that we've had, though those policies differ in some respects. I mean, I don't know how else to put that, except for the fact that we, we are indicating here that it would be the policy that no district officer/employee, including Board members, staff members, support staff, we can't hold any employment or contractual relationship with a business entity which is doing business with the district. So that's the starting point.
Starting point, and so immediate family is okay, just in terms of a general broad brush comment, immediate family members.
Well, Mr. Whitmer, do you want to discuss purpose of this policy?
Yeah, you don't want the, a Board employee to also be under contract with or employed by an entity that's doing business with the school board.
Sure.
But I don't see a problem with other family members. So. Okay. And that's my question. That was her question.
Sure.
And I like, it's just, it's interesting. I mean, that would seem to be just a rabbit hole that would be fraught with problems, where you almost couldn't function, but I just thought since it was brought up, it would be nice to. Well, the statute's very complicated. Yes. It would just immediately become. Lot of exemptions and a lot of exceptions.
Thanks.
Well, and perhaps should there be a need for a Board member to vote on a specific contract of someone who would be a family member, I'm sure that's covered in our conflict of interest policy, where they would have to recuse themselves, et cetera. So I think it's probably covered elsewhere. I just wanted to ensure, I know Attorney Powers, you and I've had this conversation before, we've had contracts come up where the business is a, you know, is a family member of someone, and so I just wanted to ensure that we were all clear on that. So I'm fine with this, if you guys are.
And there is separate policy which speaks to Board members in particular, which further delimits the ability of a Board member to have a spouse who is performing services for the district, and that is its own separate policy, which we reviewed and discussed at length. But this one is a little different, this applies to everyone, including the Board.
Okay.
I don't have any issue.
Good.
Thank you. All right.
Regarding the consistency, maintaining consistency in our language, I would support just that.
Okay. So altering it to, I think we've.
If we use "their," or if we.
No, I don't think we used "their." What I think we did was use the employee.
Okay.
Because that's who we're talking about, the employee.
Right. I agree with that. The more consistent these can look, the better.
The employees', apostrophe S, right?
I think it's like three different places.
Then we'll move on to 5610.05, participation in extracurricular activities. And that's going to be on page, page 12, and now the page numbers are back down the Bates stamp.
Right, on the bottom.
Bottom right again.
So my question on this one, and you guys may have additional questions, we may be able to get through this pretty quickly today. This is a Neola policy, but you kind of can tell where additional information looks like it's changed, just because the font size is different. So I'm not sure if this transfer-defined part is something that we've adjusted, or if this is FHSAA. I was under the impression, and maybe I'm reading this incorrectly, and have heard before, that when a transfer occurs, that a student who is transferring essentially during the classification of the season, and sports season, and that kind of is, and where they align seasons, also as a, say, football, for example, and when football falls as a season, when a student would come in and.
Be able to play.
Be able to play, and there's something about that, I don't know, I think they count spring as a part of this because of spring practice. I'm not sure. Again, I'm not trying to get into the weeds on this one.
Well, I know it says school year, and, because I was looking at it as well.
Right.
When it's school year, so I'm thinking spring would not count for football.
Right.
Even though it would be in the same year, just wouldn't be in the school year, because I'm going school year from.
Right.
July 1st to June 30th. Is that the correct timeframe for a school year? July 1st to June 30th?
That's correct.
So I'm basing it on that.
Okay. And the only other question I had on this, I don't know, I think, I know the extensive conversation we had was based around attendance requirements, and I think we covered that we were going to put that in the athletic code of conduct. Okay. That's the only other question I had on that one, because it does reference the athletic code of conduct, and that's going to be something perhaps that we'll be reviewing at another time, or I don't.
If I may, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
For clarification, thank you for bringing that up. The, in this document, it talks about the athletic code of conduct in, beginning in the second paragraph, and we are addressing both of those pieces in the Code of Student Conduct Review currently.
Okay.
Those will be addressed, so we have clarity and consistency across the district. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, those are my only questions on this one. I don't know if you guys saw anything else.
I was, that was the one I was reading. I wanted to make sure that we were clear on it. So you hit the same question that I was thinking about as well.
Does this meet our current policy? Or is this, is this Neola new?
There are some modifications, but the primary, one thing we had to do initially right off the bat was to correct some titles. Deputy Superintendent to Area Superintendent, Coordinator from Program Specialist, and otherwise, this is, we had some discussion, one of the reasons it was pulled, we had some discussion last time, we had to do some modification, if you recall, regarding the definition of move, move to a new residence, those items as well. So really, this, we already discussed a fair amount of this, and we just had to, we had to sort of make those changes, put them in one place, so we could lay eyeballs on them and make sure that they now made sense correctly. Almost formatting, but it was some content. So this is sort of the culmination of that, that if our production, if our discussions before were productive in narrowing down what it was that we meant to say, alter, and clarify within this policy, then this would be the end result. And I think it is, based on what the Board has indicated in our last policy review, so.
And the title of this, obviously, is participation in extracurricular activities. So while a lot of this particular policy involves athletics, I think just the fact that it's intrascholastic and interscholastic means this could be FFA, this could be banned, this could be.
A club.
Yes, a club in anything. So rather than covering it in an athletic code of conduct, I agree that it needs to be in the student code of conduct, so it's a blanket. Okay. Perfect.
If I may.
Madam Superintendent?
One additional item, just really more for Mr. Whitmer. When we look at cleaning up language, we've referred to the Code of Student Conduct, but the original language in the first paragraph says the student code of conduct, so I.
It's however your district calls.
Okay. So that will be cleaned up, I imagine, in the final processing, because I just wanted to make sure it wasn't taken from something that was statutory.
No.
That we can be consistent in that language.
Statutes use both terms, actually.
Thank you. Thank you.
So it should be code of student conduct or student code of conduct?
It's code of student.
Code of student.
Code of student conduct, and we have an elementary and a secondary.
Right.
So Superintendent, is the, are you comfortable with the idea of, of this moving smoothly when people come to the district, when students come to the district, in terms of coaches, in terms of leagues, in terms of organizations that they would fit into, cheerleaders, this and that? This would be very, very, very far-reaching, and the detailed items, as I look at them, each one would trip somebody up if, and I sort of think that it's enloading a team, is sort of the idea. And so does that keep us pretty, keep the average student pretty open and clean, and yourself being able to allow them into FFA, let's just say, or whatever, as a cheerleader or whatever, where it moves smoothly?
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Yes, it's a great question, and yes, I do believe so. And the policy is not more restrictive than it needs to be. It allows us to put in the Code of Student Conduct procedures and guidance for all of those other circumstances, so yes.
So if it makes sense, and from your perspective, if it makes sense, you feel you can put the student in and allow common sense to take place within the parameters of this, there's judgment capacity?
Certainly, to the fullest extent we can by regulations, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We good, everybody?
I'd like now to direct your attention to page 15, and that is policy 6610, school internal funds. Now, the school internal funds policy, there was a lot of reworking that went into this. Ms. Boston Ellis and her team have been working specifically on all of the edits and believe that this is the appropriate finalized product that they wish to present to the Board for its approval as to policy. And there were some, mostly there were some, well, I shouldn't say mostly, there were eliminations of definitions which have been since inserted with further explanation. So this is really a kind of complete rework of the school internal funds policy that was sort of the standard boilerplate one, in order to meet our needs and make sure that it's specific to everything that we knew, know we do, everything that is in practice, and what is currently best practice as well. So if you want to take a moment to look over, I know you've had this before, but this is a relatively large policy with a lot of changes, so just want to make sure you have adequate ability to look over and see if there's any additions, deletions, or questions you may have regarding it prior to us going ahead and accepting the edits and approval.
Chair, if I may, my, I have a couple of minor questions, and then one that is a little more substantive. The challenge with track changes is whenever you try to read it the way that it should in, when you actually remove everything, then you realize that there are multiple grammatical things that are challenging within it, and I'll reference specifically on page 16 for us, but it's under the internal, no, excuse me, under annual audit, item B. So it says, "All funds collected within the school for any purpose shall be deposited with the principal together with such substantiating records." I'm not certain what that's supposed to mean, if the word "together" needs to now be removed, or what "with" the principal, who is the principal with? So again, track change is great, but whenever you're trying to read the sentence, maybe I'm just misinterpreting the way that's worded, but.
I think in this case, that's actually, the intention is, as it said, I don't think anything was eliminated. "All funds collected within the school for any purpose shall be deposited with the principal together with such substantiating records as may be required." So the funds that are collected, they go to the principal along with documentation.
Okay. So it's not "to" the principal, it's "with" the principal? And that's fine?
They're deposited with the principal.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
With the principal.
Ah, and no, well, in this case, principal should be capitalized here, because we're not meaning that to include.
That makes it much more readable, actually. I understood the essence of it, but just that little change will.
Right, especially when we're dealing with finance, which, in which the word "principal" can be used.
Right.
Can also be used to indicate.
Right. Principal and interest.
I was having a lot of struggle with that one. Thank you. That actually does help a little bit.
And we've treated, we've treated the word "principal" and superintendent, whether capital S or small s, really doesn't have much impact or effect here, because they both mean "or designate" according to the definition. However, I think that inserting it with a capital here would make a distinction that we know that we're referring to the title and not the.
Currency.
Core of funds.
Yes. Okay. All right.
Or shall be, shall be deposited with the principal, capital P. Is that what we're saying it's going to be?
Yes.
Okay. Together with substantiating.
After the word "principal," we, I believe.
I just don't know you need the word.
The use of a comma here would not be inappropriate, but it's not necessary.
And we still think we want to work together?
Do we need together?
In other words, what it's indicating is the funds are collected, but in addition to the funds being collected and deposited, deposited with the principal, the other item to be deposited with the principal is any supporting substantiating records.
At the same time.
Right.
I get that, but it just doesn't, it doesn't flow to me.
About a "long with."
Yes, or in addition to.
In addition to.
And addition to is, again, a little confusing.
Right, right. But "together" is just a very strange word to me, right there, whenever.
Together with such.
Along with, with a long. Other pulls the timeframe together.
What did you say, Mr. Whitmer?
Long with.
Along with.
Along with.
Along with works.
Can we change it to "along with"?
Absolutely.
Okay. That just kind of flows.
That was better. I'm like, that was one of those, and I'm like, I don't really know what this, okay. Yes, that makes much more sense to me.
Superintendent, with all these changes, is it just pretty, you feel, you feel pretty comfortable that you can just operate with this?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Again, another kind of grammar thing on page 17 for us, and this would be under H expenditures, number three, item B. So for us, it's at the very bottom of our page. Again, H expenditures, number three, item B. I think we're missing the, any gifts, awards, including scholarships or honorariums to individuals based on value defined. I think it should be "the" value defined in procedures. Again, track changes, sometimes it makes it a little difficult. I think it should be based on "the" value, but tell me if I'm missing, it's right at the bottom of the screen right now.
I agree.
Agree. And technically, the term "honorariums" should be "honoraria."
Right.
Right. Honoraria is plural.
So even it's right there.
I mentioned that, that may.
The part that.
Listed as "honorariums" six other times here, I'll have to do a check for that.
Right.
If I may, while you're on that, the next page, 18, H4 is similar to that.
Yes, I just, I was seeing that on the screen, too. That's exactly.
Thank you.
Because I have that one circled, is, I'm not sure what that means. When the value, based on the value.
And the other section, give us one moment for catching.
Sure, of course.
Um.
So the first one was H3B. Did you, we get that one done, H3B?
We just fixed that one.
Okay.
Here on our screen.
Perfect. And then the other one is in section four, go down to the next section.
Four.
And it's H4. Oh, sorry. No, we're still in three. I'm sorry, we're still, it's the page turn that got me. We're still in three. So it's 3H4.
Okay. 3H4, based on the value defined. Okay. Three H four, based on the value defined, and again, "honoraria."
But we also need to remove "when the value."
Value. To individuals, when the value.
And "honoraria."
And "honoraria," yeah.
Yes. So that sentence four, only just to be reworked. "Any gifts, awards, including scholarships, or honoraria to individuals, when the, oh, no.
Right.
Remove "when the," or, sorry, remove "when the value."
Yes.
Based on the value defined in procedures. So that sentence now reads, "Any gifts, awards, parentheses, including scholarships, end parentheses, or honoraria to individuals based on the value defined in procedures."
I think that's fine, yes.
Okay.
Um, let's see, in this, I think my last question on this one is on page nineteen. So this goes into fundraising, and this actually may be more of a question for Mr. Whitmer, but also kind of procedurally from the board perspective. I'm under I, number three, item A, right there. So my question, it's been a while since I've been in the nonprofit fundraising world where drawings of chance were a part of what we did, but I know we had to be very, very careful statutorily how we phrased those things. The word "raffle" in general was never to be used, and that may have changed in statute, because again, it's been a long time since I've done that. But from oh-seven to fourteen, we absolutely could not use the word "raffle" at all. This one just scares me a little bit, even having the word "raffle" in policy, if, especially if we're saying that charitable nonprofits have the ability to do raffles in our face, for us. So I don't know if statutes changed since two thousand and fourteen, but...
Well, statute hasn't changed, and actually, you have the benefit of speaking to this person who used to prosecute those cases. The, uh, raffles, the word, using the word "raffle" is not prohibited, never has been. Now, your individual agency may have prohibited because they thought in some way that not calling it a raffle meant that it wasn't one. However, essentially, a game of chance in which there's a name drawn, somebody puts numbers in a hat, a name is drawn, and that name, then someone has paid for the opportunity to win a prize, that is a raffle. Now, those are legal under Florida law if conducted in very specific delineations. They do very specific things. One of them is, anyone must be able to receive a free entry. The other is that certain rules must be posted on every ticket, every advertisement, and must be clearly made to show how people can go about doing those things. So, the fact is that most charities end up getting that wrong, not doing it correctly, and can run afoul of the law, and there's never a prosecution, or rarely is a prosecution dealing with that. It's simply somebody calls because they're upset about the fact that somebody's not following the law, and the state attorney's office has to look at it and say, knock that off. So, um, having the word "raffle" in policy shouldn't really have any particular effect, but here, as I understand it, what we're saying under three A is that we're just not doing those. So, um, whether or not someone is calling it a raffle, if it has the effect of, hey, we're drawing random numbers in order to get your, you know, in order to raise funds, that would be still defined as a raffle.
So, but then the second sentence of this, or maybe it's the third sentence of this paragraph, does allow charitable nonprofits to do raffles and chance drawings?
As long as they're a five oh one C three, and as long as they are, they are following the rules of Florida statute as to how it's advertised.
Okay. I, I just have some reservation about even allowing that, but that's, I, I, I guess I can understand why a booster club might want to do something like that or, or...
Well, I'll make it clear that my, my general opinion would be that we should, that any charitable organization, though that is a quick and easy way for someone to, you know, have a fundraiser, it is, it is easy to run afoul of, of Florida statutes in doing so. So in general, if someone were to call me and say, "Hey, we'd like to do a raffle for blank," I would, my, my general opinion would be find some other way, because you're probably going to mess something up in doing it, so...
Right. I mean, I had someone contact me from a booster club talking about doing some kind of thing like this, and I don't know how our policy currently reads, just kind of as a general conversation. And I, I mean, I'm just leery of it. I don't, I don't know how you all feel, if we want to include in our policy that we'll allow charitable nonprofits to do this, knowing that, as Attorney Powers has said, there is potential they could be breaking the law in the process with having a name of a school or something attached to it. I, I, I mean, I used to do these, so I know how challenged, and I, we had the language and it was, you know, ten or twelve things and, you know, yeah, you had to have all of that spelled out. And, and because of how longstanding and established the nonprofit fundraiser was, we had all of those things in place and knew what all the regulations were, and had done that for ten to twelve years. But for someone just trying to do one-off and have an idea of an antique car or something they want to do a chance drawing on for the sake of some booster club, I'm leery of it. So I don't know how you guys feel, but that's, those are my concerns.
I don't think we want to do anything that's going to put anyone in potential of breaking the law, because if we're authorizing something and they break the law, it ultimately comes back to us. But I, I need more understanding of this whole process.
Sure.
Normal things like, like fifty-fifty drawings, that type of thing, how do they fit into that?
They're usually in violation.
Yeah, they're, that's illegal, actually.
They're usually in violation, it's just that they've been done for so long and it's, it's, it's for a good cause and nobody bothers to move forward with it or do anything.
Yeah.
However, those cases generally come up because someone has been told they can't run a video internet casino business, and they say, "Well, but this club does raffles," and that's also violated. And so everybody starts pointing fingers at each other, saying, "Well, look, everybody's doing it." And then, all of a sudden, now there are fifty different organizations that have done these for ten, fifteen, twenty years among their members or at a charity event or something like that. And now, everybody, if we are in keeping with actual Florida statute, has to go back and say, "No, you can't do it that way." So...
One mile over the speed limit, so we're not going to spend the whole day out there on that.
Yeah, and, and...
For our policy, do we want to, you know, I'm, I'm just comfortable with...
If we, if we are permitting raffles to be used, which is perfectly fine, so long as rules are followed, it's going to require some specific setup in order to do it the right way, which is also going to mean you're probably the person, the people in the district that are going to be called, if anyone is called, which is the important part. Hopefully, hopefully if someone's going to run a charitable event, they will seek guidance in the ways that they might run afoul of statute. And if they do, that's going to be then incumbent on your legal team to come back and respond to each of those and say, "Here's how you do it, and here's how you don't." So...
It puts common sense into it. I like that.
Well, and under, under all conditions, the raffles can't be, can't be conducted with, on school property.
I, I heard Mr. Browning say it puts common sense in it, but when you look at some of this stuff that happens, census is not common. A lot of folk, I, I, I just want us to be in compliance with the law, more than anything. So if we need to tighten down on some things or make some things crystal clear, so when these folk are doing them, that's the side I, I line up on.
If, if I may, I will say that in an attempt to be clarifying as to this under three A, and give some guidance as to what we can and can't do with raffles, the fact is, if we left this portion out of policy altogether, then it simply allows any, it's now, now Florida statute controls, period. Not Florida statute also, along with what our policy says and what you can interpret our policy to mean. Florida statute controlling would always just be, I mean, that's always going to be there. And so, I think that perhaps the more problematic area is, in trying to be explanatory with our policy, we may create situations in which someone runs afoul of policy, but is permitted to do something under Florida statute if they do it in the correct way. So...
Can we put the statute, well...
Well, the statute, that was where I was going to go. Can we actually make it even more clarifying and actually spell out the main things that they have to have done? That any person can receive a ticket for free, and that there were two specific things?
I would say that referring them to Florida statute rather than explaining it is better, because if you take...
Just send straight to the statute.
Okay.
Yeah, I've had literal trials.
Shall be conducted in accordance to the statute and leave it there. That's...
And that's what it says right now. I, I just want to make sure that...
And that fits the common sense component, which is follow the law. And it, it just makes sense. It's just easy.
It doesn't put us in a bad way.
I like where it's going.
Yeah, it doesn't put us in a...
This is also always something that, that can be governed by our generalized procedures, and the board can simply say that it wishes to have a policy on point which says that, you know, if we're going to do any fundraiser of any kind, including any charitable raffle or anything like that, it must be in compliance with Florida law, which is quite obvious.
Right. If we throw it in procedure and we actually have this procedure then spelled out, if someone comes to a school and says, "I want to do a chance drawing for whatever this might be, in, on your behalf," okay, then here's the procedure you must follow. I'm fine with that. If, if we're, I, I just would prefer us having something a little bit more than just referring people to a statute, because they very well may not go, something that is kind of like, okay, here's your next step. Here, here's, here's actually what you have to do in order to make this happen.
Right. And, and just speaking from the legal perspective, I would say that in guiding someone as to the next step, it is, go look at the statute and do it that way if you want to do this, because you're doing it at your own risk. As opposed to us trying to handhold through, here's how you should do it, and perhaps there's open, there's increased room for misinterpretation in our best interest of trying to have a, a policy explanation. So...
I agree with attorney's advice. I, I like that.
What, that, and there's, there's some, so this is saying that the raffle should not be conducted on school property?
I mean, that's...
Is that statute or our policy about...
That's what I'm, I'm trying to look up, the statute now.
I've, I've not, I've not encountered that particular, I, I know that that's been in policy previously, but I, I don't, I've not encountered that as something that was a, that was statutory. I think that's, that's largely been a prohibition by most districts, but...
Statute is written for who, who can conduct it, not where.
Where.
Right. Statute says that it has to be a five oh one C three organization. And I will tell you that the background here, if I, if I, I don't mean to distract the time here, but is that very often an organization will approach a five oh one C three, or a charitable organization, or a school, and say, "We want to do this on your behalf." Because they're not a five oh one C three themselves, and they actually are going to run this, and there may be some motive that they have for doing it on our behalf, and essentially using our...
Tax exempt status.
Yes, so I, I...
Happens all the time.
I, caution always comes to mind when dealing with these sorts of issues.
So this part of this, where it says the raffle is not conducted on school property, that's us. That's what...
Yeah, I, I don't know of any statutory provision that I've, that I've encountered which says that it can't be done on school property. That, I think, is a, I think that's, that's a typical and common, mainly it's, you know, any, any form of gambling, even if, even if it's a, even if it's permitted kind, is typically not something we, that any district likes to try to defend happening on their property.
Maybe need to make sure that this is, Superintendent, that it's out there, if that's where we're going, because, um, we might be on some slippery, sinking sand. I won't say slippery, sinking sand, because they're, they do raffles.
Right. I'm just, what about like if a school, like say, a school was trying to raise fund for their art program, so they had baskets, so you raffle for a basket. So, I mean, that's what I'm thinking of when I think of a raffle.
Me too.
Or something like that. So that's why I, I'm really not, I mean, maybe I don't know enough about this, but I'm not comfortable just saying, oh, someone might make a mistake and we're getting rid of it, even though there is clearly some statute to be followed. And if somebody or whoever wants to do it, then they follow the statute, and we just be very clear on that. And then that's, that, but I just hate the thought of just, because something might happen. Well, if something might happen, then we better just go back and take care of a whole other things, because something happens, might happen everywhere.
I'm where you are, Ms. King. I've thought about those. I've been, I've seen the, the baskets that have been raffled, and, and when I see this saying, "On school property," I'm like, are we, where are we at with this? Because, um...
The, the challenge with, and I, I totally appreciate that, and I absolutely, if, if we're wanting to go in this direction, absolutely. The challenge is that I can guarantee you, the raffles you've seen have not allowed people's names in there without paying for a ticket. That's against Florida statute.
That's, that's the central, most important element that...
Right.
Gets you into possibly being...
So even if they're currently being done, they are against Florida statute.
Even if it's currently being done, and our policy has said not on school property.
Oh.
Oh, right.
You get what I'm saying?
Right.
If they're being done on school property, and our policy is, in the past, because this is, that just came forward. That wasn't something we added. That was already in the policy that they shouldn't be getting done on school property. So, we need to clear this right now and make sure that schools know what's going on.
My recommendation would be, I'm subject to further discussion with the board right now, would be to maintain, I, I don't want our policy to become a pamphlet on how to run a raffle.
No.
Okay. However, what I believe that we should do is refer to any, any fundraising activity which involves a game of chance must be in accordance with Florida statutes and list, you know, we can list specific chapters within the Florida statute. I think we should eliminate that and not conduct it on school property language, because, you know, those basket auctions or things like that is something that we, that, that does happen. And in accordance with Florida statutes would also mean that when they're going to run this, they need to be, they'll need to be informed, and that could also be something in procedures, that if someone requests a ticket for free, you got to give it to them. It's that simple. So...
Thor?
Thank you for mentioning procedures. I think that that's the core and the crux of this. Our policies are our policies, and then how it's carried out is operational.
I like that. That's, you know, and it, it, it falls in with the legal advice. I, I like to keep it simple. Otherwise, we have to address meteorite strikes and how we deal with that, you know, just any, any absurd notion.
But it happens all the time, so it's not a meteorite strike, for sure. It's...
Here's another, here's another perspective. A teacher, a teacher has little tickets. I keep a ticket. Oh, I catch he's doing something good. I give away tickets for free all day long, then you can pick out a prize. To me, that's a raffle. So, kind of. It's not a raffle when you're doing that?
It's not, because this is specific to fundraising and actually money in exchange for those tickets.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So this is all in the fundraising policy. But no, I mean, that, while it sounds like that's like a game of chance, it's not in a fundraising capacity. But I mean, I understand the, the question, but...
Well, there's also not something of value that is given for the tickets.
Right.
Oh, you mean for it, yeah.
You're not paying for a ticket.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
Whenever, the, the, the definition... Yeah, right. The definition under Florida statute is you're paying money...
Nothing for you.
...or a chance to win a prize.
Right. A hundred dollars for a motorcycle ticket.
Right.
As I used to do for seven years. I mean, that's...
Kent, what, what, do we have a procedure in this? Let me ask that. Do we have a procedure surrounding this?
No.
Do we need a procedure surrounding something?
We have a lot of work to do on procedures as soon as these policies are passed.
Again, that's...
I don't, you know, if we can bless it, if Superintendent can bless it...
I'm going to tell you something that could be for us for breaking the law on this.
But I mean, I...
Does it happen all the time? I mean, is this really something where it's, we're seeing it constantly, and it's like, okay, we need to slow down, we need to, you know, tighten in on this?
I, I just want to say, just because it doesn't come before us doesn't mean it's not happening. And so just because of Attorney Powers and my knowledge of what this language actually is in statute, is why I even brought it up today, because I, I know that there are violations all over town, all the time. And so I just, I, I mean, it's, well, I mean, this is, this is a, a law specific to, and we're specifically singling out nonprofits who might want to do this, and I know that they often...
I think any effort that we make right now will be clarifying over current policy, because current policy says, "Raffles and other activities of chance shall not be conducted for school-connected..." for school-connected activities. Students may not sell any other item on the school grounds without having the principal's approval first." So essentially, raffles shall not be conducted. That's policy, not even just procedure, though we do know that-
What is that Florida statute? That's our policy.
That's not Florida statute, that's our policy.
So that's our policy. So as a district, do we want to keep that as our policy or do we want to remove that policy? So because we've been seeing that, where people aren't going to get penalized, or are we going to be firm like we don't want it at all? I think that's the decision that needs to be made, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So it's not breaking Florida statute, it's just breaking policy. For me personally, I'm comfortable with that as long as they're, they know the procedures and they're not breaking Florida statute, I'm fine not having it as school board policy. That's me, I don't know where you guys stand.
I agree with that, especially the creativity aspect, like I can think of schools that use, create a currency and it's, let's just call them library bucks. And then, and then the children, the students spend the bucks and what have you. That isn't counterfeiting, that isn't creating a currency, that isn't, you know, it's just creativity and it's involving a give and take, ownership, earning, a lot of lessons are involved, and we can't get down into that. I like what you're saying and that is go by the statute, go by the policy. If something's out of hand and it's inappropriate for the superintendent, she stops it. It's just pretty simple. That's, to me, that's common sense and that way we aren't down in the weeds and trying to reinvent everything that's possible.
I, again, I feel like what I'm hearing is that our policies need to be statute-driven and that when it comes to procedures for potentially sticky situations, and I believe I just heard you say, Dr. Gullett, that there's a lot of work that still needs to be done on procedures. And that, to me, is squarely where this falls. So I'm ready to move on.
I'm fine with the way this is written. Our current policy is not aligned with statute, though. I'll say that. Because, and/or, I should say, there are violations of our current policy that we know that are occurring. And we know that not only are they a violation of policy, but they're also a violation of statute. Because any chance drawing that happens on any campus at any given time right now is a violation of policy because we've just indicated if it's happening on a school campus, it's a violation of policy. And secondly, statute is very clear that you must be given an opportunity for a free chance at that. That is statute and that currently is not occurring also on our campuses. The way this is worded should get us closer into alignment with that as long as-
Procedures, right?
Absolutely.
That's why we won't have procedures.
Absolutely. And it does-
statute, procedures.
Right.
I like that.
Superintendent, that's-
Because we're bleeding over, I think, into procedure and I would propose that we go ahead and remove that and the raffle is not conducted on school property unless that's a violation of statute because we know it's happening.
And it's not a violation of statute, though currently it is a violation of policy.
And that's my concern because we're violating our own stat, our own policy by having that-
And that's what we're here for, to clean things up. And that's why we're going to have a trigger every year to look at things, like the whole marijuana thing comes to mind.
I don't want us to have policy that puts our people in jeopardy-
Right.
-of doing something that they've been doing the whole time that they thought was right.
We don't want them to go to jail for auctioning up.
Right.
We don't want them to get reprimanded because they broke policy.
Right.
Correct. Frankie, it's the first sentence of that also.
I'm not sure, I'd like the board's guidance. I'm not sure on 3A whether we need to simply eliminate it altogether because I'm not sure how we can leave any of 3A there.
You want to rework it and then bring it back to us?
No, I just think it needs to be gone.
Gone. I like it.
I'm fine with that.
I don't see, any, any activity involving an element of chance shall be conducted in compliance with Florida statutes. That's the only Florida statutes and procedures as promulgated by the district, something like that.
May I ask a question? So then we'll have, the superintendent, her team will work on a procedure in regards to that. Will removing A leave any, a lot of gray area?
Removing A essentially now doesn't say that it's prohibited to have those things on school property or on behalf of school. Currently, our policy says can't even happen in connection with educational activities.
Because obviously, I'm kind of looking at it from maybe a different lens. When I read this, it's in there twice about being on school property. It's at the beginning and it's at the ending. And I'm wondering why it was to that point that they stated that twice in this, what was the reasoning behind this? We can't, I can't figure that out, but whatever we need to do to clarify, fix it for our folks, we need to do that. Yes, ma'am, Mr. Stor.
Yes, I think I can clarify the first piece coming from high school, that any fundraising activity conducted on school property is a school-connected activity and should not conflict with the total instructional program of the school system. And I have seen, you know, where this has become a pretty magnified big deal on a school campus. So you don't want this, whatever you're doing, to override, yes, what you're supposed to be there for. So I believe that's where that came from, kind of as a warning.
Okay. Okay. Superintendent?
Chair, thank you. Would it be helpful to put a statement right at the beginning under fundraising I that states that fundraising is in accordance with Florida statute there? Because I know I'm hearing the conversation on raffles, but there are a lot of other-
Fundraising.
-fundraising events. And capturing it there in that first paragraph when talk about the preapproval and the process, could we state it there and provide clarity?
I would say that in keeping with what you're saying, Superintendent, at the last sentence of I in that, in that paragraph before number one, we could add the language where it says, "and should not conflict with the total instructional program of the school system," we could add the language that indicates and must be in compliance with Florida statutes. I mean, if that, if that would fix what you're talking about.
I believe it would. I think it would help to provide clarity upfront when we first talk about fundraising so that when we create procedures, it's in accordance with Florida statute.
I can go with that.
That would allow us to eliminate 3A.
In my opinion, correct.
Yep.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so I'm altering the sentence at the, the first paragraph of I. The sentence that says, "Any fundraising activity conducted on school property is a school-connected activity and should not conflict with the total instructional program of the school system, comma, and must be conducted in accordance with applicable Florida statutes."
Which can be specified because they're already there.
Yes.
So anyone can look them up?
Now that we had all this discussion, you know, Dr. Gullett, what are your, now that we, are you comfortable with us taking that out as policy or?
I am, as long as, in hearing your conversation about the statute, I think if we stick with the statute and allows us the opportunity to create procedures in alignment with that, then yes. As long as we've clearly stated, I felt that that first paragraph was missing that.
Okay.
It took too long to try to weave through that. So we just need to state it and then we can create procedure accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, guys, we're going to, we're going to do this heartbreak. I think everybody knows that we have to do one right now. Our spoke are here and we want to get this resolved and get back to this. So we're going to recess for, say, 15, 20 minutes.
Yes, sir.
At 10:50, recess at 9:57 a.m.
It's been a rough couple of days.
Guys, we're back on from the recess. Let's continue to the last section. If I'm not mistaken, it will be public attendance at school events.
That is item ninety-one sixty. And the public attendance at school events policy begins on page twenty...nope, sorry.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
So the extensive conversation we had on this one, I just want to ensure that this is in fact what we wanted to say, was dealing with alcoholic beverages during events. And the way this edited version basically will say is that we are not allowing alcoholic beverages in any district function, period. That would be operated, controlled, et cetera. And I just want to make sure that's in fact that's the way this word is worded now, correct?
The way that it's worded is that is alcoholic beverages...
Maybe.
...alcoholic beverage may be consumed, possessed, consumed, or distributed at any function sponsored by, operated, or controlled by the district or at any function occurring on school board property. With the exception to the culinary program at Marion Technical College, alcohol may be used in connection to the curricular needs while preparing recipes and tastings that must be secured and inventoried under the supervision of the department head.
Right, so no alcoholic beverages. Again, no alcoholic beverages. So this is going to...
That's not what...okay.
Yeah, it does say no. I know, that's why, I'm just making sure that...
Okay, it says no alcohol, okay, it was in the fold.
I know, I know, I was like, wait a minute.
It's in the fold, okay.
It is in the fold, that's why I'm looking on the screen. So no alcoholic beverages. So that means it will change how we currently run district-sponsored or departmental-sponsored fundraising events that have alcohol.
And do we want that?
That's my question, because that's the way this is currently worded.
If you do not want that, then the proper thing would be to simply, I mean, I would submit that the proper thing to do would be to eliminate sponsored by and just maintain operation or control if it's operated or controlled by the district. Sponsored by the district does give a little bit of a, perhaps, an open question to some events that may be sponsored all or in part by the district. We already do have within this language specifically that says that we, that it's not going to be a...
Some event...
Not going to be on facilities that are...
Not on school district property.
Not on school...
Some events are sponsored, I'm just asking superintendent, are sponsored by other entities. We have, we do have events that are sponsored by other entities.
Yes, we do.
And in the case of another entity sponsoring it, if they want to sponsor a cash bar or whatever, this prevents that.
Or property, right.
Superintendent, are you, are you comfortable if we did allow alcohol in certain circumstances that were sponsored by, say, the way we operate now, are you comfortable that you could tighten it up when you wanted to and not have alcohol when it wasn't appropriate? And if it was appropriate, then we would be legal?
May I assist with that? And I don't mean to take away your question from the superintendent. But as a matter of, foundationally, what we've dealt with so far is that it is clear from the language here at the end of the sentence, under no circumstances will there be alcohol at any function occurring on school board property. With the exception to that being Marion Technical College for specific purposes. Now, an event, so the only things we're talking about now are events which are not located on school board property. So someone leases a, a school property from us, they can't do alcohol there, period, anyway. Okay? If it's something that we, we're doing an event on school property, no alcohol there, period. With the exception, again, of potentially MTC. Now, this is limited now specifically only to those things which are occurring off school board property and which are sponsored by, operated, or controlled by the district. Now, the, I think that the element that everything boils down to as far as all the questioning that we might run into is, do we wish to maintain the...
It's been a rough couple of days.
Guys, we're back on from the recess. Let's continue to the last section. If I'm not mistaken, it will be public attendance at school events.
That is item ninety-one sixty. And the public attendance at school events policy begins on page twenty. Nope, sorry.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
So the extensive conversation we had on this one, I just want to ensure that this is in fact what we wanted to say was dealing with alcoholic beverages during events. And the way this edited version basically will say is that we are not allowing alcoholic beverages in any district function, period. That would be operated, controlled, et cetera. And I just want to make sure that's in fact, that's the way this word is worded now, correct?
The way that it's worded is that is alcoholic beverages.
Maybe.
Alcoholic beverage may be consumed, possessed, consumed, or distributed at any function sponsored by, operated, or controlled by the district or at any function occurring on school board property. With the exception to the culinary program at Marion Technical College, alcohol may be used in connection to the curricular needs while preparing recipes and tastings that must be secured and inventoried under the supervision of the department head.
Right, so no alcoholic beverages. Again, no alcoholic beverages. So this is going to.
That's not what, okay.
Yeah, it does say no. I know, that's why, I'm just making sure that.
It says no alcohol, okay, it was in the fold.
I know, I know, I was like, wait a minute.
It's in the fold, okay.
It is in the fold, that's why I'm looking on the screen. So no alcoholic beverages. So that means it will change how we currently run district-sponsored or departmental-sponsored fundraising events that have alcohol.
And do we want that?
That's my question, because that's the way this is currently worded.
If you do not want that, then the proper thing would be to simply, I mean, I would submit that the proper thing to do would be to eliminate sponsored by and just maintain operation or control if it's operated or controlled by the district. Sponsored by the district does give a little bit of a, perhaps an open question to some events that may be sponsored all or in part by the district. We already do have within this language specifically that says that we, that it's not going to be a.
Some event.
Not going to be on facilities that are.
Not on school district property.
Some events are sponsored, I'm just asking superintendent, are sponsored by other entities. We have, we do have events that are sponsored by other entities.
Yes, we do.
And in the case of another entity sponsoring it, if they want to sponsor a cash bar or whatever, this prevents that.
Property, right.
Superintendent, are you, are you comfortable if we did allow alcohol in certain circumstances that were sponsored by, say, the way we operate now, are you comfortable that you could tighten it up when you wanted to and not have alcohol when it wasn't appropriate? And if it was appropriate, then we would be legal?
May I assist with that? And I don't mean to take away your question from the superintendent.
Either one is fine.
But as a matter of foundationally, what we've dealt with so far is that it is clear from the language here at the end of the sentence, under no circumstances will there be alcohol at any function occurring on school board property.
Correct.
With the exception to that being Marion Technical College for specific purposes. Now, an event, so the only things we're talking about now are events which are not located on school board property. So someone leases a, a school property from us, they can't do alcohol there, period, anyway. Okay? If it's something that we, we're doing an event on school property, no alcohol there, period. With the exception, again, of potentially MTC. Now, this is limited now specifically only to those things which are occurring off school board property and which are sponsored by, operated, or controlled by the district. Now, the, I think that the element that everything boils down to as far as all the questioning that we might run into is, do we wish to maintain the word sponsored by, which can, can be vague and can be very difficult to nail down in a definition? Or do we want to simply say operated or controlled by? Because sponsored by, I can think of the argument that there are a number of events which may occur off school property which are sponsored by the Marion County School District in conjunction with other sponsors.
Right.
But it's not operated or controlled by us. Now, for those things which are under our operation or control, I think it's quite clear that our policy, your intent in our policy has been to exclude alcohol. However, the sponsorship portion is, we may be doing something in conjunction with another agency or with a, with a nonprofit or, or with a, some other vendor that is, that is outside our operation or control, but it is sponsored in part by us. So that would be the only.
I'm, I'm in favor of removing the sponsored part and saying operated and controlled. I don't want us to give any impression, because we have a drug, drug-free workplace and all that kind of stuff like that. I don't want us to miss, mix messages that we condone it on one side and we don't condone it on the other side. If we just remove that, that word sponsorship, I think it keeps us right where we need to be. And if we're partnering with another entity or organization and they decide to do it, that's, that's beyond our operation and control, which is part of the sponsorship.
And if I may, Chair.
Yeah, I want to hear this, yes.
I, I'm thinking of an example that might be a little bit different as well. Let's suppose in the future that an organization chooses to engage with us in a facility use agreement. And they host a wedding, for example. Auditorium, an event cafeteria, and they have alcohol. It's not sponsored by us. It is on board property. There might be a facility agreement. That would be allowed.
No, it would not.
No, it would not.
Because it's on school board property. And all circumstances, on school board property is disallowed.
Okay, so with operated or controlled by, is still considered under that umbrella?
Well.
Because we're still.
There's an or.
Just consumed, distributed. Operated or controlled by.
The district or, continue reading, at.
Or at the function.
Occurring.
Okay, I just want to make sure they're thinking of examples that might occur.
Yeah, they're.
On your example, I'd like to see that work. Now, I don't know how we get there, but I'd like to see that work if it's SEC and we're having, say, we're having a televised event or something like that. We have a reception at some point, for example, or a wedding, or, or something. We, we, we just have to fit that, and that's why we have procedural. I'd like to see that happen if, if it's, if it's, you know, if it's a board's pleasure. Because it's, it's obviously common sense. We want to do it. We don't want to stop and exclude ourselves from the venue because you couldn't have a reception, for example.
Well, the, the bright line rule that we're establishing here, which I believe is what is in keeping with what the board has discussed before, is that the only exception to alcoholic beverage on school board property for any reason whatsoever, reception, function, the only exception is for Marion Technical College-specific purposes, curriculum instruction. That's it.
For instruction, right. So if they rented out MTC for a wedding reception, they're not allowed to serve alcohol.
Right, it's not just that MTC is a blanket no man's land now. It's, it's that, it's that for, in correction to curricular needs while preparing recipes and.
Right.
Tastings and things like that, so.
Is that something we want? Is that sort of, it's sort of a carry nation kind of an approach to life to, for me? If in fact, we see it and it's clear that it would be appropriate.
It's the drug-free workplace policy that Reverend Cummings brings up is interesting to me. And while we're not seeing that today, to reference it, but it's similar to a tobacco-free policy across the, the district too. I mean, would we allow, I think, I think eliminating it is eliminating it. I, I don't know.
The tobacco-free policy stuff typically is something that, that institutions do because it gives them discounts on their, on their.
Oh, okay.
As far as drug-free workplace, we're required to have certain, it doesn't necessarily completely prohibit possession of alcohol on premises. That's something for us to do. It does prohibit intoxication at, you know, during employment. And, and our current policy captures that as well with, no person shall be in possession of or be under the influence of an intoxicating beverage or illegal mood or behavior-modifying or controlled substance. However, this is just specifically regarding possession. We recognize that within schools, perhaps differently than other, than, than other employers, given the nature of the fact that we have, you know, students, that aside, that there might be other things that we don't, that, that we don't permit within a school environment, that it may be fine for there to be a bottle of champagne at a retirement party at some other event. But that would not be something that we would wish to, from my discussions with, or our discussions here, doesn't seem to be something that we wish to encourage within a school environment. So I think that keeping the sponsored by portion, that certainly it's within your purview to do however you like it. But that, I think, eliminating that would be the only change that would seem to be in keeping with what you've indicated as a board in the past. Otherwise, your rule is, we don't want alcohol on any school board property or at any school board function that we control and operate. With the only exception being MTC and then for specific purposes.
If I may, I have an additional question. Attorney Powers, then with operated and controlled by, in a situation such that it's off property, off board property, but there are staff members that are helping to host, employees helping to host, are we still in compliance with that? If the impression is that we are part of that? Is that, would that be under operated or controlled by?
Well, there's, that brings up two interesting issues. One is as to premises liability. That's the liability that, where I, I think it's very safe for us to say we don't want alcohol on any school board property specifically because of premises liability. If you are operating a function and alcohol is served and someone is over-served or claims later to have been over-served, then that's, that's a problem. But specifically as to your question, Superintendent, that's a very good, that's a very good question and a very good point. And that is that, to the degree that any of our employees are involved in the hosting, setup, anything like that, it can be said that we maintain a level of operation or a level of control. However, that level may be quite diluted compared to someone else's operation or control. I would say that the organization that is actually in control of it needs to be made clear if there's alcohol to be served. And if employees are to be assisting, I don't think that that's board, or that, that's, that's our operation or control. So long as it's made clear that they are.
What, what if those employees, great, it's a great question. You, you just asked it in a much better way than I can ask.
I know, I know, I have it the same way. I just was not going to say it that way.
So what if those employees, while they may not, we may not be sponsoring it, but they are involved in the hosting and all of that, if they're still on the clock.
Right.
For us.
And if.
What is that though? And their salary, they're on the clock, right? So how does that play out with us? Because technically, we're paying this employee to perform this function.
I mean, I think the question for me, and I'm going to phrase it differently than you did. You did it much more eloquently. I'm going to be a little, I mean, this is the elephant in the room. Do we consider the Public Education Foundation a separately organized entity of a 501(c)(3) or are they also serving as a department of the district?
Some of them are paid by us.
I, I understand how they're paid, but are they also a department of the district?
They are, yes.
Okay, so then that.
They're an organization.
Answers that question. Anything they would do would be considered operating or controlled by the district if they are also a dual report as a department of the district?
I don't, I don't want to put our people in a position where they're getting in trouble.
Agreed.
And, well, talking about that, I'm, I'm comfortable in the past what we were doing before, if we can just word that appropriately. And then as to Dr. Gullett's point earlier, if somebody wants to rent out, now, is it statute that alcohol is not? No, it can't be, because we're going to use it for something else. But what if we could allow our venue, say, they wanted to rent this venue and they wanted to have a play and serve wine, it was adults. I know, I'm talking about weddings, I know my daughter had to purchase insurance.
Insurance, yes.
So maybe we, what we could do is require insurance should they have alcohol. And then that way it covers that area, and then that way we're not saying no to renting.
I saw.
So that is something that could be covered.
Becomes a part of the contract.
And it's not during school hours, it's nothing that, it's an outside resource.
They have to have license, poor license, and there's, there's lots of.
Yeah, and I don't want to see a box in the foundation, whatever, because they've done that for many years. So I want to make sure we have that wording correct too. I don't know what my other, how my other board members feel, but, you know.
I'm, I'm with you there. I want, I, I was thinking that too about the limited liability insurance.
Yes.
That they would have to purchase to have event, basically event insurance.
Yeah, it's not, it's not extremely expensive, but it, it covers should something happen.
How could we?
That way.
It puts it into the legal.
Correct.
If that's fine, then it's procedurally sound, then we can work, we can function, and we're protected.
How could that happen?
There's not, there, this is a policy question for the board. There's not a legal answer that I'm going to be able to give you that works because I can do it however you want it. What I can tell you is that from a liability perspective, Ms. King is absolutely correct that there's liability insurance specifically for that. When we want to, when the, when an attorney group wishes to rent out the Appleton for some event, we're required to maintain a rider policy, pay a couple hundred dollars for that event in order to, you know, show that we are insured for exactly that premises liability. So from a.
That would go into the facilities uses agreement as far as requiring that liability.
That fix is there. However, you're also then going to, this is perhaps a little bit like whack-a-mole, but then another question you have is, what if in this scenario, this event that they're hosting, there will be students at the event and present at the event, even though it's not primarily intended to be that way? And now we have interaction of, I don't know, let's, there, there's a, there's a Super Bowl booster that's being, I don't know, just making something up off, off the cuff, some Super Bowl party that's being hosted at a, at, at some property on our property and students are invited to come along with the public. And then there's, you know, a keg being served.
I'm thinking.
Are you comfortable with that?
If whoever's hosting that party allows the minor to drink, then.
Well, not allowing them to drink, but having a keg party in which minors can't drink, but it's a Super Bowl party, you know?
I'm, I'm, my inclination is that.
Want to see.
In that facility usage agreement, all those things have to be spelled out that the only people that, in that party or whoever should, who are allowed to drink must be of the legal age to drink or whatever. And that, and that would come within that facility usage agreement. And that needs to be spelled out in their limited liability insurance or whatever. I don't want us to be so restrictive where we can't do things with our facilities and allow people to rent them.
I can see how that could backfire because, say, we had a, an, a non-instructional employee, employee of the year, and they're twenty years old because they're wonderful and just, that was the path they chose. And then they were at teacher, you know, teacher of the, or something.
Right.
And then, oop, you're not twenty-one, I, I, so, I don't know.
That, but the twenty-one is illegal.
Right, but I'm just saying if they were twenty. It's twenty-one is legal, but I'm just saying if they were twenty.
I don't drink, I don't drink, so I don't know, I don't know anymore. So, but I think that falls back to the legal side of it.
Right.
Breaking the law.
And that's procedural.
Yeah.
And that we can function, and, and then we can, we can achieve revenues and we can.
But I definitely, I definitely don't want to put our public education people, since we've already said it, I don't want to put those folk in a position where they can't do their job. They can't do the things they, that they do.
They've been doing it for many, many, many.
And it works.
So how do we adjust this to fix it? Because right now, the way it's worded is not allowing them to do that.
You're right. As, as, as stated, it says no alcohol on school board property, period. And it also said, with the exception of MTC.
Right now.
It also says that no event sponsored by, organized or controlled by.
Right.
So.
Well, their events aren't on school board property. Their events have, well, since I've been on the board and prior to, they were away from.
Well, sure, yeah, there, there's two ways to get to the prohibited part. One is if it's on school board property, it's prohibited under this, under this iteration of the policy. Now, and the other is whether or not it's on school board property if we operate or control or sponsor the event, that alcohol is not permitted. So you really, I think, there's probably two different decisions you need to make. One is involving our facilities, use of our facilities, and do we want to allow alcohol if people rented out for a wedding reception or, or whatever they're doing? Do we want to allow the use of alcohol by, for, for those purposes? And, second one, is what if it's operated or controlled by the district? And it's off property? A third consideration might be, what about those scenarios in which, I don't know, for example, the retirement party sort of scenario? It's not, the facility isn't being leased or rented, but there are, you know, employees who wish to have a, you know, off premise, or on premises celebration, which includes alcohol. Is that going to be permitted, or do we need to spell that out more? I don't know. So three questions, I think, really is what you have to ask.
And at the end of that, could you say if allowed, and fix my language, but if allowed by the superintendent, alcohol procedures? Alcohol allowance procedures? Let's just, you know, make that X.
Right.
Make it legal, make it a correct, that it would include insurance, it would include appropriateness, it would include an SEC reception, it would include these exceptions. And then we would, we would adjust it, and we have a responsible.
It goes back to the superintendent.
Procedural.
Discretion.
Superintendent. And, and to me, that would be quite easy. Because you would know if it's right. If it's something that we want to do and we just want to be consistent, then we would be consistent because the procedures would be consistent.
It is something that we brought up at one of our prior sessions that it could, I think the language indicated that had, with, with prior written approval by the superintendent. One of the questions was to, is the, does the superintendent want to have that responsibility of approving every request for alcohol or tracking it down, you know? And, and, and is that something also that is appropriate use of, of her time decision-making resources?
She says no.
That's up to you.
And that's, you know, case closed. If that's the, if, if that's the procedure. I mean, if, if that's where you want to go, then we have that ability to open or close the door.
Because now it's, right. And that, that is essentially taking it from a policy, though, and putting it now into a procedure, which sometimes is appropriate. But now it's saying the school board is essentially, to a degree, remaining silent on this.
Right.
And allowing the superintendent.
Mate, full disclosure.
To be the decision maker.
Superintendent, let's hear what you have to say on this.
Thank you, Chair. My question is liability. What's the liability if, if superintendent is listed in making determination on alcohol?
From a liability, liability perspective, I, I think that the primary liability is simply going to be if someone acts in an inappropriate manner while alleged to be under the influence of alcohol at an event sponsored, controlled, or operated by the district or on district property. And that approval was given, there is always the possibility, given by the superintendent or by individual, approval is always going to be said, and, and this is true, even if it's by the board or some designee of the board. Where there is alcohol involved and someone has an, can make an argument that, that this never should have been permitted to have been served there in the first place, then there's, there's always that argument can be made in a, in a, in a, in a suit later. I don't think that should be our controlling factor. The controlling factor really, from a legal perspective, I think, is more along the lines of a, we can deal with. of, we can deal with premises liability from someone being over served or something like that, with, you know, requiring a group from the outside, we're not going to be doing the serving, so a group from the outside would be required to have a, have a permit to do so. But just keeping in mind that that might not be, I'm sorry, not permit a insurance liability policy to do so. Keeping in mind, though, that there are a number of different ways that we're talking about here, that if you're allowing alcohol on school district property, which you may choose to do, then are we allowing it for employees? Or are we saying for employees, no? Are we allowing it for leased facilities? Are we allowing it in situations where?
At athletic events?
I'm sorry.
Athletic events?
Athletic events.
I mean, that may, that's where my mind is going right now. I think we need to address each one of these. So let's talk about school district property, first of all. Granted, there may be FHSAA or something like that that we also would abide under, but if we are allowing possession and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages on school board property, currently policy basically would say even an adult bringing in an alcoholic beverage to an athletic event would be removed, or told to throw that away, or because our policy is that we're not allowing that consumption on property. If we take that out of this, then we're now opening up an even greater, because this whole policy is on public attendance at school events, and athletic events are school events. Granted, I'm not certain what FHSAA has to say about alcoholic beverages at athletic events. So there may be a separate policy that we could refer to. But I think if we're talking about allowing alcoholic beverages on school district property, I believe we can add a clause, while we have the exception of the culinary program, I believe we can also have, also the exception of, unless covered under a rental agreement of the district or something like that, an outside entity renting the school district property. I think that's, I don't think that we're saying that any school district function on school board property, like an athletic event, or like a play, or something like that, would allow alcoholic beverages. So I think that we could cover it if we added that clause, if we're okay with that.
I'm good with that.
I think.
Especially if the superintendent, if we can, if we could just take a small capsule of procedure, and we go there, then we're protected, because the superintendent's not going to do something inappropriate. So that gives us that filter. I'm very comfortable. I like the way you said it, and I like what you said. That's, that's great, because that's really, we have.
If we're, if our attorney and our superintendent are okay with what I said.
We have discretion, and we have a lot of discretion, and we don't do crazy things. And so if, if there was a scenario that, that came forth, we don't want to turn it down categorically because of this, because a reception has to be a part of it, let's just say. So, boom, it goes in. But she is never going to, or, or the superintendent is never going to open it up inappropriately, like you can just have, you know, a bottle of whiskey in your pocket on the property. No, that's not going to happen, because it would not be, it would not fit into procedures.
Sometimes the easiest way to go about making those kind of modifications is less with adding phrases explaining and more removing. What do you think of if we indicated no alcoholic beverage may be possessed, consumed, or distributed at any function sponsored by, operated, or controlled by the district, and eliminate at any function occurring on board property? Because that leased property would now no longer be an event that is sponsored by, operated, or controlled by the district. That's operated or controlled by someone outside. And then we could still maintain, with the exception of the culinary program at Marion Technical College, because of the fact that that is operated and controlled by the district. So...
So we've only approved one part of it, then, because now, now we're going back to the fundraising example of the Public Education Foundation. So if, I'm fine, if we remove that at any function occurring on board property, and I agree that if we include operated, controlled by the district, that would encapsulate our athletic events and plays and other activities like that. So that would be fine, and then, however, we, I don't, I don't know how the cleanest way is to make this. I appreciate trying to clean it up and make it more concise, but we haven't fixed the fundraising aspect, if we do just what you.
Correct. And, and what we're really doing here is, to date, we've not had this to be an issue, and part of it was because we did have, in at least one instance, probably something that is violative, that occurs, we can't really, we don't want to continue in that, in that vein.
Right.
So what, what we are doing, though, is we are making a lot of large policy determinations based on two events, one of which we've never had a problem with, which is somebody leasing a property. In the past, it's always been understood, if you're leasing the property, no alcohol. We don't have a problem leasing parts of our property for non-alcoholic purposes, and that's been fine. I don't have any indication that that's something that is, that we're losing any revenue as a result of that. But we can modify that however you want. But that's as to the leasing portion. As to the other, all of the discussion we're doing here is, is essentially to fix that one known potential problem. And whatever language we use needs to, we need to be clear that it does fix that, and I'm trying to help, help get there.
With the.
Get happy, Mr. Whitmer.
Well, let's see what Mr. Whitmer has.
Would a, would a function at a leased, when they lease the property and go under rental agreement, is that a school event at all? This policy's about school events.
If it's a district-wide celebration of school-related employees, I would classify that as a school event, if we're recognizing our teacher of the year.
If it's operated and controlled by another entity?
But it is, and that's the, that, so our Public Education Foundation operates as a 501(c)(3), but also duly report, or functions as a department of our school district. So that is.
If it's not a rental agreement, I would agree with you completely. If it's a rental agreement, they're holding themselves out as a separate.
Well, Mr. Whitmer, what we're dealing with is the scenario that we're specifically talking about is, there may be events, there are at least two that we know of in which there are, it's a, it's a celebratory event for, and potentially also fundraiser for particular, we've got.
Employees.
Public Education Foundation, we got, was it Golden Apple as well?
That's Golden Apple.
So we've got some of these, they're, they're really, everything about the event is a district event. Now, it's held off campus, but alcohol is served at those events, not, you know, and that's, that's what we're dealing with here. Just to be precise, that's the, alcohol is served at those events. So our options are either to say, in the future, alcohol may not be served at those sorts of events, or to say that we are going to alter board policy to find a way to ensure that that is not violative and that our intent is preserved. And I don't think just calling them a school event or a non-school event, it's, everything about the event is district-related, and so we're probably going to end up still having that discussion about whether it's a, an issue or not. So we really have, it's a binary decision here. We, we either have to say, this, we are going to allow this specific type of event, and then make our wording such that it encompasses that, or that even those events for the future, going forward, any event which is going to occur on board property or be involving the district, shall alcohol is not permitted any more than, you know, another controlled substance would be.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. If I may, is it the board's pleasure to perhaps consider having language in there specific to the Public Education Foundation?
Right.
Because we did that with Marion Technical College last time, after we had this discussion.
I think we should, I think that.
I like that, I like that a lot. Especially if we had, did have, like, let's say, a Big Eight Conference thing, and we had a situation, you just bring it to the board, and boom, we could, we could deal with it anyhow, probably. So that would solve that problem, if, if we, we saw that that's what we wanted to do. And it would also address Allison's concerns. As long, I would just like to hear what would be satisfactory to you, Ms. Campbell, and then I think we can move forward.
I.
It's not just satisfactory to.
Right, right. No, I mean, I mean, it's not. But I mean, I, I'm wondering, then, I, and I think it is specific to the Public Ed Foundation, because that's what we keep dancing around and trying to figure out. And I wonder if the phrase itself, the entire paragraph gets rephrased to say alcoholic beverages may be possessed, consumed, distributed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, if, and then if either it's a part of the culinary program, or it's a function of the Public Education Foundation for a fundraiser, celebration, something like that. And so I think that if we say that they can then be possessed, consumed, and rather than making it the negative side, making it more of, that we, not that we're necessarily encouraging, but we're allowing if and only if these two scenarios are met, or potentially. I don't, I don't know. I think we are going to need to have this one massaged and actually brought back to us, similarly to the way you're recommending the two that we didn't talk about today. I don't know that we're going to come to a complete resolution today on exactly how that needs to be phrased. I believe that the intent of what we're trying to do, you kind of can hear that. We, I don't know that we've come to the full conclusion on whether we want to allow alcohol during rental agreements. I think we did, but as long as we're okay with that one, that also needs to somehow be phrased in this. But there's a lot of wordsmithing that is needed for all of those different scenarios that we've discussed. I mean.
I'm actually there with the vice chair. I think we did hear about the rental agreements, that we're not trying to stifle that. Because as I was sitting there, I was thinking about, someone rents the facilities for church, and they decided to do communion. I thought about that. So we don't want to stifle those types of things. But we do want to make sure that this covers MTC, which we did it, but also the functions that the Public Education Foundation employees do, because it is a function that they do, and we don't want to, you don't want to crucify them right now, based on what they've been doing.
I believe at the current time, we know MTC, we know the Public Education Foundation, and Dr. Gullett had a great suggestion of just adding that wording. I don't see why we couldn't just do that now. I'm not really, I don't understand why we need to massage and make more of this, because those probably are the only two things that we know of. If there is something that comes up later, well, the beauty of this is we can always change it later. So rather than spend hours, and, I mean, we talked about this a good hour last time, and it's just, to me, it's pretty simple. We know MTC, we're thinking of the foundation, if we're in agreeance, that's what we want to do, let's do it and move on. I really don't see it necessary to come back for anything else.
Terrific. What's the language?
This is the third time we've addressed it for over an hour.
The third.
But it does, it does, each time, it's a thorny, I mean, it's a thorny patch that we keep running into potential obstacles on.
Right. But we know what we want, right.
What she's recommending, it makes us legal, let's do those, we know.
We're in agreement, we're in agreement on those.
We're in agreement.
So.
So what's the language?
The language.
Oh, good, good.
Can we use the same language, basically, as what we did for MTC?
You get me, we're good.
No?
Yes. I mean, you, so, if you, if you wish to, I mean, you may draft away, and I will, I will.
So, basically, we're just adding another entity that, we're giving another entity the exception, that we've given MTC. The other entity would be the Public Education Foundation.
And we also have to incorporate language that says in lease agreements, because that's not there either. So that's what I'm saying. Do we, first of all, if we're going to wordsmith this while we're sitting here, do we want to take out the no alcoholic beverage, or do we want to start it as alcoholic beverages may be? That's the first question.
I like that. That allows it, that allows the language.
I mean, the four of us, we have to figure out how we want to start the phrase. Do we want to start it in the no alcohol, unless these exceptions, or alcoholic beverages may be possessed if these exceptions?
I like the no.
Okay.
I like the no.
All right, so then let's keep going. So no alcoholic beverages may be possessed, consumed, or distributed at any function sponsored by, operated, or controlled by the district. Are we removing the phrase, or at any function occurring on board property?
With the exception of.
I mean, if we're removing the function occurring on board property, are we removing it there, or are we adding an exception?
You can leave that, and then after that, you put with the exception of.
So at what point does the possession, consumption, or distribution of an employee who brings it onto campus, if we're allowing it on board property? I'm just, I'm throwing out a scenario.
There's a difference.
Okay.
There's a difference.
Oh, no, that's fine.
An employee that has a bottle of whiskey in their, you know, pocket going off. I mean, that's not the intent of this board, and I think you're.
Agreed. I'm just, I'm trying to make sure it's going to, while we're wordsmithing.
What we're wanting to do is have absolutely, we're work-free, I mean, we're an alcohol-free school district. There are some exceptions. MTC, our culinary program. Foundation, for years, they've been having a celebration that will include some alcohol. That's all we're looking to do right now. So let's just see if we can wordsmith this, put that in there. I don't, I cannot think of any other function that would include alcohol at this point.
So we're removing the phrase about functions occurring on board property?
No, because that's going to be one of the exceptions, two of the exceptions.
Correct. Okay, so it will be.
Make a blanket provision.
So if we remove it there, then we'll add it in, in the exception.
Removing it there as a reminder, removing, removing the phrase, or at any function occurring on board property, does open up the leases, or any other event that is occurring athletic, you know.
No, athletics is going to be sponsored by the district.
I don't think the intent is for athletic anything. I have not heard that from that board. I don't know of anything in the past. I do think there, the board may have been considering if we lease, and they have insurance, not necessarily a school function, I'm thinking outside, whoever's running, or, you know. Maybe I'm wrong on this. I'm not talking about like, oh, it's, you know, we're going to have a.
Do we even have to have, do we have to have the lease part in this? Because this is public attendance at school events.
Correct.
But we don't even need.
And that's not a school event. What I'm thinking about leasing are not school events.
Right, well, me neither.
So if we remove at, occurring on board property, then that opens up the opportunity for lease agreements?
Yes.
We don't have to address lease agreements in this.
Absolutely. But the only way we can allow them is if we remove the phrase or any function occurring on board property. We have to remove that if we're allowing alcohol in lease agreements.
It would be an exception. You would add them as an exception, correct?
I don't know, that's, that's where we are. We're, we're wordsmithing. I'm trying to get us there.
That was your original question. So let's go, let's decide that. We either start it with a positive or a negative. If we want to start with a negative, you make the exceptions. Let's, let's decide that.
I say you start with no alcoholic.
Right, I think we're at that point.
And then you make the exceptions below.
So how about rather than just say function, say school function? That takes that out, to me. You would know anything school-related, school function, zero.
I like that, school-related.
Yes, so right there where it says function, before it, we're going to say.
At any.
School, any school-related.
Yep, right there, right where your cursor is.
[clears throat]
Okay.
The superintendent?
Yes, that works, that's a lot.
Okay. With the exception of the culinary program, et cetera, do we need to have all of that alcohol may be used in connection, et cetera, et cetera, with MTC?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Because they're not supposed to be serving alcohol, I guess, particularly for.
Curriculum, correct.
Okay, let me give you a scenario, I'm sorry, a scenario, that someone rents out MTC for a wedding reception.
That's also a lease agreement.
That's not school function.
It's not. So that's why I'm saying I don't think we need all the rest of alcohol may be used in connection with curriculum needs, et cetera, et cetera. I'm saying with the exception of the culinary program at Marion Technical College, comma, the functions within the Public Education Foundation, comma, and lease agreements as established. And the only reason I'm saying that is, this person rents out the Marion Technical College for their reception, and uses Marion Technical College students for the catering needs.
I think we need to have that, I think we need to have that in there. I'll tell you why. We've had an incident, we had an incident there.
Okay.
That, we really, we need to have that in there.
All right. You've convinced me. So if we're making a comma, then, after department head, to then say.
As in Public Education Foundation.
So I think we're going to have to say with the exception of, and probably a colon.
Right.
And then we're giving maybe even scenario one, scenario two, scenario three.
I like that.
I can go with that. I can go with that, with the exception of colon.
Colon, and then we'll make one, the culinary program at Marion Technical College.
Right, and then two would be.
And then two.
Public education.
Events of the public edu, yeah, with the exception of. And then a colon.
And you would list one and two, or A, B, or whatever.
Yeah, actually, the colon is going to go right after the word of.
Eliminating space between exception and of, not a.
That's a semicolon, if you can back up a little.
One more.
One more space.
One more space.
One more space.
Back up, back up. There you go.
There you go, okay. Now, if you can actually make a, a paragraph delineation where we're actually numbering scenario one.
F, colon.
And this becomes like a bulleted list with numbers.
It'd be a number or a letter.
So if you go up to the top row where it has, I'm sorry, and the actual word, um, where it's bold, italics, underline, et cetera, if you can actually, yeah, that's fine. Okay. Um, then we'll remove that colon right there and we'll probably rephrase that just a bit to just say the culinary program instead of to the.
Take out two.
Then number two is going to be just functions of the Public Education Foundation of Marion County? Are we, are we going to open that up to whatever function they want to incorporate?
You're, you're, you're the educator.
I mean, they're, so that, that would open up.
Educators up here.
I, I'm not certain if they have it at their golf tournaments, I'm not certain how some of, if they, okay, I, so functions of the Public Education Foundation of Marion County.
Can you repeat that again?
Public Education Foundation.
The public.
Uh, yeah, Foundation of Marion County. Okay?
Capitalize the F while you're.
On foundation, right, the F on foundation should be capitalized.
Just so we don't come back.
Um, and then number three, um, I don't know that we, do we need a number three to incorporate lease agreements since we've now added school-related function occurring on?
You can't, you can't put it there, but I mean, the policy's talking about school events, so.
Right.
But you can put it there, it would just be a secondary reference.
Right, so, oh, exception of lease agreements.
So the use.
Facility usage agreements on school board property.
It does for me.
I'm good, as soon as you're good, I'm good.
So no alcoholic beverage may be possessed, consumed, or distributed at any function sponsored by, operated, or controlled by the district or at any school-related, which actually school-related probably should be hyphenated, school-related function occurring on board property with the exception of the culinary program at Marion Technical College, probably where alcohol may be used in connection to the curriculum needs while preparing recipes, tastings must, and must be secured and inventoried under the supervision of the department head.
Yeah.
Function, yeah, where, mhm. Perfect. Functions of the Public Education Foundation of Marion County and facility use agreements on school board property.
I'm good with that.
Should, does, does the facility use agreements, does, based on the tense of how we're saying this, should we say outside or some, just, I, I'm curious, facility use agreements feels, doesn't feel like that, I feel like there's one more word missing or something, but maybe I'm wrong on that with the, so if we say it with the exception of facility use agreements, okay, I, I guess it's okay. Like outside entity facility use, maybe not, maybe we're okay with it.
Attorney Powers, what do you, what do you think?
I just want to make sure we're, we're, we've landed where we want to be on what the, what the.
Exceptions are?
Exceptions are, and then I can make sure that legally drafted is all set.
I like that.
Does the facility use agree, probably not, this would just be to add to it, facility use agreements on school board property inclusive of liability insurance, probably not, we probably don't need to add that in policy, that can probably be a part of the facility use agreement, but does that need to be spelled out here?
I would say that if we are allowing facility use agreements, um, that we need to make it abundantly clear that, um, those are going to require that there be alcohol-related provisions in all of those agreements. Whether or not those agreements are going to be by someone who wishes to use alcohol, there needs to be something in the agreement which indicates that either you're not going to, or if you're going to, you're going to submit proof of liability insurance. So it needs to be clarified in every lease agreement we do in the district here from now until the end of time that we're, that they are either not to use alcohol or it is to be used only upon the, um, provision of, uh, liability policy. And that's something that they will need to go through, um, Ms. Lively's Department of Risk Management in order to, to get the appropriate, um, proof of, of such. So.
If I, if I may, Chair, relatedly, I'm looking at facility use agreements, I just want to be sure that it's clear that if, if a facility use agreement is denied, it's not denied on the basis of alcohol, but it could be denied on the basis of something else, that that doesn't set us up for any challenge here. I, I don't think it would, but I just need to ask that question.
If it's denied not based on the use of alcohol, but.
Right, so it would, the alcohol would not be the determining factor. Let's, let's say that facility use agreement is denied for other reasons that are in conflict with the district's, um, other district's school board policies. There, there's no conflict here in that, is there? Is there anything that needs to be in the language?
Um, I, I'm not sure I follow as to what other.
Like a dog show or something that we just, just don't want here.
That's a great example, Mr. Browning.
It's not something we're going to lease the facility for, are, is, is she okay with that and not?
There's no entitlement as such.
It's not implying alcohol.
There's no entitlement.
Or we don't think that's, that's, or, or we think that perhaps there might be youth involved and we think that that's not in our best interest to support that, that where there might be alcohol and we are uncomfortable as a district approving that.
Right, and someone would say that your board policy outlines a provision in which you can have facility use agreements and, uh, that involve the use of alcohol, and so if we're going to have the, the Oktoberfest in this auditorium, that that's not a basis for denial if, if we have followed the board policy here, so.
And if it's a dog show, then we can not have it and it's not implying.
Well, every facility, there's no guarantee that anyone can ever have, I mean, our facility use requirement, or facility use agreements are, are ones that are negotiated with the district for who, whatever organization is doing it. Whenever we get into excluding an organization based on what it's going to do, um, we always run potential risks that someone would say that it's unfair that we're excluding them for that reason. But if we have a, if we have a no alcohol policy, um, or if we have an alcohol is permitted policy, um, for facility use agreements, then that's perfectly fine, we just would be, it would be not advisable to deny someone an alcohol, to deny someone the ability to do that for a, they may not our rules. So even if it didn't sound like it was a, you know, sort of in keeping with the mission of the Marion County Public Schools, like I said, an Oktoberfest or a, you know, Bud Light Festival or some sponsorship or something by an alcohol company, by an alcohol-related company or a distributor would be permitted. Um, and they can advertise it as such, um, you know, they, they could advertise, um, you know, that this is going to be on the, a local high school campus or a specific, um, facility of the Marion County Public Schools and, you know, alcohol will be served. So those are things that you.
Maybe we need to take that out.
I mean, I, I would like the word requirements. I, I think that that would help us if, if we used, we either facility use agreement requirements or facility use agreements on school board property requirements, understanding that the facility use agreement's going to have multiple facets to it, but this is specific to alcohol use requirements. So will that clear it up maybe?
Yes, I think perhaps, so I'm picturing perhaps an elementary school is asked to be the site host for Oktoberfest.
Yeah, we do not want that.
And so I'm, I'm posing that we just might want to consider what our exposure is to, um, perhaps a denial for appropriateness again in keeping with board's wishes and our, our core function, our core function.
Um, if that's what you'd wish to do, then I think we should eliminate number three and we should go up and modify, uh, the school-related function in the first paragraph just to say, or at any function occurring on board property again, because we're back to, we're back to that. Because I, I'm not, I, I, I don't know an easy way to clo, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just don't know an easy way to close that net while, without, I mean, if, if we're, if we're setting it to catch, you know, certain potential problems, that's.
Nor am I, I'm just trying to think about situations that, that limit our risk and liability and our keeping with.
Right, I mean, unfortunately, we always have to think of the things that are, that, that could be unintended consequences of our well-meaning policy modifications. So.
So if we remove number three and we remove the word school-related, then again, we're back to no alcohol on board property. And I, I'm fine with that if that's what we all are in agreement on.
Right, and the, as far as I'm aware now, the only conversations that we've had which, um, which that would have any potential impact on would be as to lease agreements specifically, and we haven't had, I mean, I'm not aware of that being an issue to date, um, lease agreements, if they were going to lease public school property, and we do have partners who lease properties all the time and we just don't serve, they don't serve alcohol.
Well, and they probably don't come to us for lease agreements because they know that this is our policy. Now, if we open it up, then all of a sudden, we may have a wedding reception at MTC cafeteria every weekend, I mean, or somewhere else, or a wedding hosted here in the auditorium or, or on Westport's, in Westport's auditorium. So, I mean, I, I think that they're probably not asking now because of the way we currently have policy.
Right, and I, I will point out that, that there's, there's, there are other county and city government-owned, um, facilities which do permit alcohol with, and, and it's, it's very clear that within their templates, if you're going to serve alcohol, you have to do these things, that's easy enough for, for us to draft and for me to make. The problem is, is that it runs back into those city or county things may not have quite the same sensitivity of the fact that we have the age appropriateness factor, the, we don't allow a student, for example, to wear a shirt that has a Budweiser logo on it. And so, you know, it could be viewed as inconsistent, but ultimately, that's, now currently on our, um, on our rental agreement, we were just looking this up here, it's got, um, we've got possession and use of facilities will not be permitted until the undersigned provides proof the insurance described has been obtained, that's, that's other premises liability insurance. Proof of insurance required of any party using a facility as school board regardless of whether or not a fee is charged. Tenant agrees to abide by the rules of the school board of Marion County, Florida, including but limited, uh, not limited to, the prohibition of tobacco products and alcoholic beverages on the premises. So currently, if someone's renting a facility for some reason, they just know going in, you, you can't, you can't smoke on the property, you can't, you know, drink on the property, that's, and, you know, that's the same thing with state parks, for example. I mean, state parks have also done the same thing, so.
So do we want it or not?
And that's the legal, that, that's the portion that legal can't help you with.
No, I know, that's what I'm looking at, you guys, do we want it or not?
They can make it work however you want, but it, it, it becomes.
This is the massage.
Difficult.
I can live either way, but I would, I'd prefer to leave the options open for procedural, uh, as we were going. I, I prefer that and, and, uh, I, you know, it, it makes us legal, I want to be legal with what we're doing right now and I want to capture revenue if it's logical and we actually want to do it, but we don't want to stumble over our own prohibition. So with that said, I'm good either way. Uh, what's the board's pleasure?
We're in the business.
Education.
We're in education.
And I think, Dr. Gullett.
That's our core.
Are we taken away from our core mission and its students and that? So at first I was thinking of just a building and a facility, but when we think about what's in there and that's our children, I'm like, yeah, that's probably not the best example, so I changed my mind.
Yeah, we're in the business of education. I just think we need to figure out, have, have exception for MTC and for our Public Education Foundation to do their functions. And all the rest, all the rest, we can go away with it.
Yeah, we don't even need to worry about that, think about that.
Yeah, not worry about facility use agreements, anything like that.
We need to focus on education.
I just want to make sure that we have the exception for MTC as far as their curriculum and then for our public education to do what they do, which is for us, the gala and those different celebrations for our employees.
All right, so walk through this with me then, uh, and with, we've got, um, the policy as stated, let's put our listening ears on and make sure this seems to make sense as we go through it, because I'm going to read it at full speed first. No alcoholic beverage may be possessed, consumed, or distributed at any function sponsored by, operated, or controlled by the district or at any function occurring on board property with the exception of the culinary program at Marion Technical College where alcohol may be used in connection to the curriculum needs while preparing recipes and tastings and must be secured and inventoried under the supervision of the department head.
And two.
And two, functions of the Public Education Foundation of Marion County.
That's it.
That's it.
So, uh, I did have one que, there was, we're, are we keeping sponsored by or not in the first line? No alcoholic beverage may be possessed, consumed, or distributed at any function sponsored by, operated, or controlled by.
Leave it.
Because the Public Education Foundation is our exception and that's the reason we had all the question about sponsored by.
Yeah, so you can leave it.
So I don't even know if we need one and two, I, you may just be able to do this at, with the exception of the culinary program, blah, 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 department head or function of the Public Education Foundation, and you may not even need one and two. I, I only made us have one and two because I thought we were having at least a three. So that's just a formatting thing, I can go with that.
I, but I, I like it.
Okay, it's fine.
I like delineating it out very clearly so that it's blocked out, these are the two.
Okay.
Keeping them, yeah, exactly. So, um, let me just make sure that we have all our punctuation in the right place.
Yeah. Superintendent, are you good with those changes?
Yes, I am, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Um, I want to change that to say maybe used in connection with the curriculum needs or with the curricular needs, how do you want that to read, Superintendent?
I, I would, I would, yes, I didn't want to go back and do more editing and addition everything that we've already, um, had today with, yes, um, with curricular needs.
With the curricular.
It's already a very long sentence, which I would actually clean up if we.
Right.
Had more time, um, it's a bit awkward and, 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 quite honestly, I think I would even just shorten it, say must, must be secured and inventoried, period. Under the supervision of the department head, if, if that title ever changed, um, under MTC would have to come back and I think that's not necessary.
Okay, uh, would we put a period after tastings and then put?
In the sense that inventory?
Alcohol must be secured and inventoried?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can provide the procedures for that to occur and already do, so I think the rest is more operational, less policy.
Do we need to qualify? I, I know you want to take out the. I, I know you want to take out the department head or whatever, but inventory by somebody other than the student.
Well, it's secured.
And the reason I'm stating that, the reason I'm stating that is because there, I know that there was an issue there at one point.
Okay.
And.
Okay.
And was staff or whatever, security inventory, yeah.
Could we say according to procedure?
That's fine, yeah, because the procedure was spelled out.
Yes.
Yeah.
It just, my concern always is in putting a position.
Position, title.
When it changes, it has to come back for revision and a.
So inventoried according to procedure?
According to established.
Established.
District procedure. Capitalize, capitalize district and put procedure.
And then we're removing under the supervision, yep?
Yeah, you can strike all the other stuff, yeah.
I think there's an E on alcohol, I think. Yep.
Space.
Okay.
What's up with that curriculum?
It's just where she doesn't have a.
Curriculum, okay.
Yeah. So it looks like it's curriculum, but it's not, it's just where the space isn't, and they'll clean that up.
Any other issues, guys?
Um, not to belabor the point, there's one thing that I would, that, that does matter legally here, where we refer to alcohol, I would prefer for us to refer to it as alcoholic beverage, because there is actually a distinction in Florida law. So the two instances under number one. Thank you, where it says where alcohol may be used. Where alcoholic beverages, if you can edit there. Both, both iterations of the term alcohol in there, I want to say alcoholic beverages.
Chair, if I may, so Attorney Powers, that would include then, in, in any type of alcoholic-related cooking ingredient legally?
Yes, because in, in fact, some, there are certain things like vanilla extract, for example, which contain alcohol, but are not defined under Florida law as an alcoholic beverage, and so those are not going to be subject to this stringent procedure simply because they wish to use vanilla extract in a recipe. So that doesn't, vanilla extract, which may happen to contain 35% alcohol, is not going to be subject to, at least still, still subject to whatever procedures we have, but we're not creating additional procedures because of its nature as an alcoholic substance.
Just want to make sure they're all covered.
Right, yeah. So that, that would be it.
I think that's it.
Any other revisions, guys?
We haven't looked at the other two pages of this, right?
I mean, it's about video recordings and things, and I think it's fine, I, I just read through it while we were sitting here, I, I think it's understood, I mean, if, if students are, or if, if families are coming with the intent to record a play that is copyrighted, that's not allowed, and, and surely we're not allowing that, I mean, that's, a necessary license is not secured in advance of the performance, the audience shall be advised before the performance begins, that those kinds of recordings are not prohibited, I mean, I'm assuming that's already happening, surely, under the agreements of actually even being able to secure the copyrighted material. So I, I don't see anything else in this that would need to be adjusted. But thank you, Ms. King, for pushing us forward to get that established and fixed today. So that one's done.
Mr. Whitmer, you and your team, y'all have anything else for us today?
No, I don't think so, we've covered it.
Carrie?
Okay, as to the other two policies that were placed on here, the policy 8800, I intend, intend to bring forward as a, as our, within our first batch of updates, and in the meantime, I'll use our religious, religious expression policies as they have existed so far. As to the drug-free workplace policy, just, are we waiting on, as far as Neola's portion of the cleanup, that, that's, that's, that's done at this point?
I think that, yes, there's a clean version of the Neola policy, I think part of that was the Marion additions that were being added in.
Okay, so those, those additions that have been added, are they awaiting any kind of cleaning by Neola? Okay. All right, so the, the, the cleaned versions as they exist right now are, can, can go forward for further collective bargaining consideration or anything else like that, right? Okay.
So does that mean that what we have in our folder is what we're sending to the union to?
Well, that means that at this point, the, the union. Collective bargaining agreement needs taken into consideration, this policy determine if this is in keeping with.
Their current.
What they want.
What they want, and if there's any areas that, that we have a disagreement, and then we need to discuss that in order to.
So we're having them bring it to us, rather than us bring it to them?
Um, to be, to be honest, that's, that's a staff question, I don't.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I just, I want to ensure that we are very clear on how we make that sound, that this, obviously, if this is with the union determining how they're comfortable with this verbiage, but we as a board hasn't come to a.
I think this is our language going to them.
Right, this, this language.
Our language going to them.
I just, I want to make sure how we're very clear on that, because right now it sounds like they're bringing back to us.
Yeah, and Neola's informing, this is an entirely Marion policy, so it's, it's, we just are.
Right.
This, this would be something now that, that can be presented, we, we can't, Neola can't really clean it as a Marion policy and fix it unless we adopted a Neola standard policy, and then it would then be something that, as it stands now, we can take this for further collective bargaining action, negotiation to the degree that it needs to be, and then that proposal would be submitted to the board. And because it's an entirely, an entirely Marion policy, it's not really something that needs to be cleaned by Neola after that.
Sure, I, I mean, it, it, this.
Just has to be approved by the superintendent, myself, and the board, in order to make sure that it's in keeping with everyone's.
So this one isn't marked up, so that's my only question, so are they bringing us something that they would like marked up, is that what, are, where, where, where do we stand on this policy?
This is our current policy, isn't it? It's not a new policy.
I do not believe so.
So it's our current policy, so apparently they already have been in agreement, because we've never heard anything about them having any issues with this policy with us.
But I think that is part of the question, because it, the way we have spelled out CBD and THC and those kinds of things, I think is part of what they're.
So we're presenting our policy to them, and if they have any issues, they'll bring those issues back to us.
Right, because this, this does represent, not misspeak, it does represent an alteration in our current policy because of the fact that this includes some updated language that is necessary for drug-free workplace stuff. However, that being said, this is a policy which incorporates our, it's, it's largely consists of our prior policy with updates and necessary changes on top. Those necessary changes are things then that still need, can't be unilaterally done by the district, it has to be in association with a collective bargaining agreement, because it could be, there's the argument that it could affect working conditions, specifically as to when drug testings allow, what kind of testing, whether there's a second tests can be given, factors like that. So I believe that as this is here, can be given to our staff to go forward and make those changes with, or make those negotiations with, with, into the collective bargaining agreement, so that we can then bring it back and have it finally adopted. But as of right now, we don't have a drug-free workplace policy other than the one that we have that's in existence already.
Right.
This is, this is not, I shouldn't say we don't have one, what I mean is, this doesn't represent anything that is, has become final, because this is alterations and changes that are still subject to, to collective bargaining. We've, the policy that will be, that is currently used, the current policy we have, is the one that moving forward, past when we accept all the, all of these Neola updates, and we've finalized this process, is the one that will stand until we get that new one and adopt it. That it, that it makes sense or make it muddier.
All right.
All right.
Ms. Nicole, Superintendent, do you have anything? Superintendent, do you have anything else?
Nothing additional, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. King?
I do not have anything, thank you.
Mr. Browning? Ms. Campbell? All right, there being no further business, meeting is.
I would, I would like to, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, I would just like to take a moment to thank our, our board for having put a lot of diligent effort into reviewing what ended up being a lot of policies, so that we can be moving on to rulemaking and development with something that's really been the culmination of, you know, over a couple of years of work. Like to, I mean, staff and the superintendent for having worked on each of these policies ad nauseam to make sure that they were sometimes reviewed three or four times, the Neola crew as well, and also to my staff, to Ms. Brown for having run sort of interference between all of those varying parties and competing interests as well, thanks so much, because this has been a long process, and I think that once we have this in place through our rulemaking and development, the updates should be a whole lot simpler now, so they don't get, you know, a twitch in my left eye every time I hear Neola policy, so, you know.
I got a twitch too.
Attorney Powers, if you don't mind me asking, so when you mentioned first update, are we looking at that to be after our November organizational meeting, as we just discovered yesterday, or are we thinking we'll have updates in July, I think that's when Neola?
Yeah, most likely we'll be looking nearing the end of summer, because what we're going to do is, this, this batch is just about everything.
Right.
It's, it's, I don't know, if I can use a number, something like 95% of what we need, and then the others we'd be chasing around for a long time to try to get, so we're getting this batch online, this is the bulk of everything, and then there will be some actual updates and a couple, these couple small policy modifications that we know right now needed to be fixed, but are still awaiting something that we will be doing, and that will be end of July, but in the meantime, there's no reason to hold up the huge bulk of work that we've done to keep it from being adopted and adopted timely for the school year.
And our, our timeline now, like when, when does the timeline start for the, you know, the board has to have them, and then there's the 30-day review, and then all, all of the things that statute says we have to do for policymaking, what?
Right, and I've, I've specifically had Ms. Brown working with Neola on, on that, so if you want to speak to that?
Yes, it'll be about two weeks for Neola to clean, maybe depending on what they already have on their, you know, what work they have.
1,600 clients, so.
And then after that, we do formal rulemaking development, run our ads, and they get adopted if you, at your leisure.
It's through public hearing, I mean, I'm just, I can't, so, but we have, they're, they're online for 30 days, and it's 30 days, right? Just, I'm trying to make sure that I.
It's no less than 28 days.
Okay, all right, just so by June 1st, it's potential that we may have policies, new policies? I mean, we're on March 30, 30th?
Early thereafter, updates.
Okay. All right, it's been a long time coming, I'm just, I was trying, I'm like, okay, what's our timeline, when are we, now that we've put all this work in, let's make sure that we actually kind of have in our minds when this is going to go live, so, okay.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned at 11:42 a.m.